I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's Exhumement Meanings Law, a copy of which is on the back wall. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. Thank you.
We will start with the roll call for the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, but he is not a voting member today. Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. Item A is the approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Item B is setting August 11th as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. Motion and second questions or comments? Then could we please vote on items A and B?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizens, comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on anything that is not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so. If not, we have resolutions D through F of Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Point of personal privilege, reminding people that masks are essential when we're in social gatherings like this. So please wear your mask, try not to infect anybody if you are speaking, or especially essential because you've spread, as the latest science shows, by speaking, sneezing, singing, whatever. So we'd ask you to wear your mask, please. Protect yourself, your family, your community, and America. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments to the resolutions on the Board of Equalization? Commissioner Boyle.
Yes. I was asked by Attorney Sean Mullen to, and I think I notified most of you, all of you, that there would be a list coming out of reductions that he's asked for. Well, this morning, there are some in here that I was just handed by Catherine Hall that are on the agenda today that I would respectfully ask you to postpone until he's available to come in person. And if I could, I'll tell you which ones they are, if there's no problem with that. Item one, Westwood Plaza Limited. Item three, W O S C LLC.
Excuse me. Could you go slower? I'm trying to mark.
I think you're looking at a different list. Would you mind? Some of these have multiple properties. Would you mind also stating the property address as well?
I don't know that I can. It's pretty.
Is this on exhibit A?
Yes, Catherine Hall handed it out.
Is this exhibit A that you're looking at?
I have them all. Oh, that's no good. I'll keep them.
Why are we not taking action on these?
They are. I sent out a list of the ones that he wants to appear in person on, and this morning we were handed a list of these others that are the same ones, but for different reasons, being changed. And the recommendations of the assessor's office are still what they were on this list. So I think it'd be, it's reasonable to try to get these heard all at one time and have Mr. Sean, or have Sean present.
Is there anybody besides Sean Mullen that we give this treatment to? Didn't he have opportunity before referees?
Well, I don't know about that. What I'm saying is, he gave us a list, Claire, that I passed out that he wanted. He's appearing in person on next, when we first hear these. Well, this morning, we've got several of his that just were handed to me, and he's not here to represent his clients. I think in fairness, it'd make sense to allow him to appear.
Commissioner Morgan.
Let Commissioner Kavanaugh help first.
Okay. I'm just trying to get the list that we're on. So in our packet, Mike, we have exhibit A through whatever, and maybe Catherine Hall knows where this list that we were just handed appears in the packet of our information.
Well, that's where I was, too. Catherine?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Well, Mr. Chair, I guess I'll.
Dan, your mic's not on.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Well, I guess permission to speak.
Please.
So may I give some background on some of this stuff first?
Fine.
All right. So these 43 parcels before you today are parcels that also had a report of destroyed real property filed on them. And so that's why you're only taking action on these 43 protests. The order, and I know I'm explaining some things to you all that you probably understand, but just for the public's benefit, when you're protesting your property valuation, you're basically saying, my value was not this value as of January 1, 2020. When you file a report of destroyed real property, you may not have an issue with your property as of January 1, 2020, but between January 1 and July 1, there was a calamity that occurred that you believe impacted the value of your property for 2020. And basically, there's a percentage of damage that gets applied to your January 1, 2020 value. So that's why we have to establish or take action on the protest first before we take action on these properties Form 425s. At the moment, the protests are, for these 43 parcels, the protests are scheduled for action today. The action on their Form 425s, AKA the report of destroyed real property, is set to be taken up on Friday. So these values that you're seeing before you right now, they will, these are not the final, you know, this is not the final action. You're going to take final, you know, you're going to have another opportunity to address their final valuation through their Form 425 on Friday. And so, yes, Mr. Mullen did have a meeting with referees on these protests. Some of them did get changes, not all of them. And we can go through ones, you know, we have the information here, we can go through, you know, what the recommendations were for any specific parcels, so.
I'm not real crazy about singling out one attorney and saying, this attorney's properties are going to get a special level of attention that nobody else's properties get. That makes me uncomfortable. Okay. Commissioner Boyle.
Does it have to be done today? Because on item E, if you look at your agenda, there is no place where you can, where you can pull these up. So, I mean, I was not aware of this. And if, as Mr. Ash said, they're not final, then what, if they're not final, as he said, then what are we doing? Do they come back to us again?
Friday.
Do they, all these come back to us again on Friday?
Correct.
Well, then let's just, I guess we can.
Well, it's.
So it's not final, then why are we acting on it?
Because the, on Friday, yeah, I'm trying to explain this as best I can. On Friday, when you do a report of destroyed real property, the assessor's office, the law basically says you need to, okay, what was the percentage of damage?
Okay, Dan, excuse me, Dan, but if they're not final, why are we acting on them?
Because you needed to establish the January 1, 2020 value in order to determine the damage. So let me give you, if I may, let me give you an example.
Excuse me just a minute. If it's not final, then why don't we just consider it all on Friday? Because these are all going to come back up on Friday.
It's a two-step process.
Two-step process?
I believe.
Is it a two-step process? Can somebody explain it?
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing on the agenda that lays these out.
Well, we were, the handout that I provided today, and you're right, this handout was not on the agenda, but we kind of saw these questions coming, so we thought we could go over the process for you all, and we can do that before we take action. But I'm trying to pull up the.
Can I ask you a question? How did Mr. Mullen find out about this?
He called me personally a couple times.
So, I mean, he was aware of it somehow?
Yes. I mean, he would want to be here today, but he, he had other stuff going on that he couldn't be here, but he told me he is going to be here Friday.
Well, this, I just want to say, this isn't preferential treatment. I agree with, I know what you're saying, Claire. But somehow, he found out about it. It's not even on our agenda to do this. It vaguely says so. Set them about destroyed real property, but there's no list to go to. The public hasn't been notified of this.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, so I am understanding here, the two-part series that we're talking about is, on these lists behind E, this listing of properties, we are setting the 2020 valuation, correct?
Yes, sorry.
And then on Friday, they are, they have, in the meantime, submitted this 425 form regarding damage to their property sometime between January and.
July 1.
July of this year. So we set these values for 2020. Come Friday, they're going to come and argue why the value should be reduced because of this Form 425 that they filled out and the damage that was done to their property.
No.
Right?
No, they're, excuse me, they're going to argue about the valuations.
All right.
Oh.
Not the storm, the valuation.
Commissioners, if Catherine Hall could provide an explanation, I think that would help clarify that.
Sure. And I'm just reiterating, I think, what Dan explained. It's a two-part, so you're exactly right, Commissioner Borgeson. This is setting their 2020 value based on the protest that was submitted.
What protest?
Correct.
Protest for damage.
No, this is the regular, the regular real property valuation protest that was filed. The challenge, and it's unique this year because the timeline is also truncated, but this, last year was the first time this happened. It was a change in the legislature as a result of the flooding. And the challenge is that even if our timeline weren't so truncated, they're.
Can you take your mask down? I'm sorry.
Sure. These processes occur in an overlapping timeline. So the Form 25s are due by July 15th. The protests are due by June 30th, and the board must take action on both sets by August 10th. So the statute sets it up for these processes to align, the timelines to align. So I understand that's, it's challenging to work out both at the same time. So the, how we've done it is separated out. All of these protests on the agenda this morning are property valuation, real property valuation protests that were filed, and they simultaneously have a pending property damage report. So the board has to take, by virtue of both those, both a report and a protest being filed, the board must take two separate actions. So we've prepared this list today for the protests, and then, once the value has been set, as Commissioner Borgeson said, then the assessor's office can review and make a recommendation as to property damage, and that will come to the board for a second action later this week. And just to clarify, Commissioner, the list I gave you this morning, I understand that was just a list for your use. That isn't the official list that's associated with the agenda. The official list on the agenda is the one that's on the screen right now.
Okay. And was that, was that published?
Yes.
It was?
Mm-hmm.
Published in the Daily Record or whatever, or what do we have to do? I mean, there's nothing on the agenda that indicates that. That's, I didn't see it. Here, let me, let me ask you this. There are the items that Mr. Mullen was concerned about, and he has asked me, I've helped him, you know, I passed out this list and so forth to try to help him make his appeals. The county board will make the final decision, and he knows that, not me. And I'm just trying to facilitate a taxpayers' protest, and I'm not trying to single him out. It's just that he contacted me, and I don't know about the other people. But what I'm concerned about is, and maybe this will clear it up, if we, let's say, for example, on the first one is Westwood Plaza Limited, and it's assessed at $6,769,000. The request was $2,730,878 because he's had tenants who haven't paid rent for a year. So then you go to the recommended, and it's back to $6,769,000. So if this is all voted in today, how does that affect his appeal this coming Friday? Because he's going to come back and ask for the 2.7 million because of other circumstances.
Sure. So you're correct. This, the referee recommended value on these parcels is what the referee is recommending. So the board may adopt those values or not. But whatever value this board adopts will then be the basis, then the Assessor Register of Deeds Office makes a determination about their damage report, and it will be based off this final value.
Okay. All I really want to know is, can Mr. Mullen come in on, as scheduled, I think it was, when is it, Friday? Can he come in on Friday and complain about these totals? Or will someone say, well, that was the total that was approved by the BOE? I mean, I don't want that to slug him in the face. So, I mean, I don't want this, if we vote yes on all of these, what will that do to his ability to challenge it on Friday?
It will, I believe it would resolve his protest at this level for the property valuation. And he would then have an opportunity, if he disagreed with the recommendations for value next, this Friday, due to the property damage, he would have an opportunity to take action on those. And any appeals to those come back to the Board of Equalization.
Could we instead pull his off of this list that I was handed this morning?
Yes.
And then give him a chance to challenge those on Friday?
Yes.
I don't want to muddy his ability to challenge. I think then I'd be the defendant in a lawsuit. I mean, I'm just trying to protect the taxpayers' interest here. So if that's the case, Catherine, and I, please don't take this as anything, I think he did a great job under terrible circumstances. I think probably what we ought to do is remove the ones that are Mr. Mullen's clients and hear those on Thursday, or on Friday, rather. Because I don't want official action to get in his way and then have somebody say, you know, Mr. Borgeson say, we already decided that on Tuesday, and you weren't here.
And I believe that that's possible. It would just bump then, the action for the damaged property would then also need to take place after the values for the protested property.
I don't understand.
So. Thanks.
So Commissioners, can I, can I speak to that? This is Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. So today, you set the values for those damaged properties, and then the assessor would have the opportunity to decide what the effect of the damage is to that value that you're setting today. So those have to be done separately. If you hold these specific properties off until Friday, you set that base value, and then the assessor would have to go back then and determine the value of the damage and what that effect is to the base property. So that would have to be done, well, the 10th is the absolute drop dead date to get this stuff done. So that is where the little bit of the sticking point is. The other question I have is, there is a list of properties that are on here today, some of which are his properties.
Right.
So he's saying that he's, he knows that this was going to be on, but he could not be here. So, Mike, right? He's saying he knows that they're on, but they could not, he couldn't be here today.
I don't know when he was told these were on here. I wasn't informed, but that doesn't make any difference, I guess. But all I'm trying to do is, Patrick, tell us how we can protect his right to appeal. That's all.
Okay. So my question, I guess, to Dan Ash is, the people that are being, are taking action on today, were they made aware of this so they could come down and appeal it today?
Well, okay, I did not speak personally to every protester, but to be honest, we just post on the website, and we let people know that. We, obviously, we have to let them know. We have to let them know when their referee appointment's going to be.
Right.
As far as when the Board of Equalization is going to actually meet and vote, we tell them it has to be done by August 10th. We don't tell.
Right.
Personally contact all of them, say, hey, by the way, 9:00 AM on the legislative chambers is when they're going to vote.
So that's true for all of them. So for, even for the ones on the 7th, that's true. For everybody, for the thousands of ones that the referees reviewed, you do the same process.
Right. I mean, it's, obviously, if someone contacts us with that specific question, we let them know, but, and we post on our website, and everyone is aware of the general timeline of, you know, come sometime between August 4th and 10th each year, the board's going to actually vote on the referee recommendations. So.
Well, can I ask, can I ask Teresa to step up and tell us?
I'd like to call on Commissioner Borgeson. She's been very patiently waiting to speak for quite a while here.
Well, the only question I had was in regards to the list. So I've gone through, and that's where I think there might be some, this might cause some confusion, because the list we have in the packet is the full list of all the properties. The list that Commissioner Boyle is working off of was just the listing from the properties that the individual contacted him about, but some of those properties aren't on this major list.
And I am uncomfortable taking one attorney's clients and saying, these clients are all going to be treated differently than everybody else in Douglas County. That.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, there was no public notice of this.
Okay.
There was no public notice.
Yes, there was.
Yes, there was.
Yes, there was.
Well, I don't see it. I don't have it on my, any of my things that I get, and I don't know what this packet is you're talking about. All I got was a sheet of paper this morning from Catherine. Could I ask our legal counsel? My only concern is that this, this person represents their, he represents landlords who own property who have not been paid their rent, and that's the whole crux of this. And so I asked, gave her a little bit of a prompt, but Teresa, all I'm trying to do is protect these landlords so that if we, for example, if we, on the first one, Westwood Plaza Limited, it's got a $6.7 million valuation. It was requested to be 2.7 because there's been no rent paid on several of the properties. So the landlord's underwater. So the landlord has asked it to be 2.7, and now the recommended referee is 6.7. It doesn't change. How is the landlord protected? If we say, no, it's going to be 6.7, does he have any recourse? Or can he say, you already decided that? That's all I'm trying to say. Let's protect the landlords out here so they can complain on Friday.
Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. So I would concur with Catherine Hall and Dan Ash and Commissioner Borgeson. So I believe you have a list, I believe it was published before you today, of a larger group of cases than what Mr. Mullen is asking about. For that larger group of cases, I think you could have a motion and a second, and if it passed, you could lay over some of those items until Friday. I believe, I think that may make this harder on the assessor's office. They are going to have to do the two-step process all in one day in one meeting. So that is something for this board to consider. In addition, the board needs to be cognizant of the two-step process. You can't go to the second step of addressing damage or destroyed property until you have set the value, the January 1 value of that property. So you have to do the two steps. You can either take step one today and step two on Friday, or this board could consider a motion, a second, and if it passes, to lay over some of those items to Friday, knowing you will have to take that step first on Friday and then address the destroyed property on Friday.
Okay. I don't want to make it more difficult for anyone, except I want to make sure that the rights of the landlords are protected to make an appeal to get the lower valuation because they don't have the income to support these valuations.
There's also an appellate process, Commissioner, to Turk if they disagree with the value or if they disagree ultimately with how the destroyed property is handled.
Will you say that again?
Turk. They have an appellate process through Turk as well.
Well, yeah, that's not exactly desirable, and we all know that. Well, I'm just trying to find a solution for the landlords on this, and I don't want to make it more difficult for anybody, the assessor's office or anyone else, but I think in fairness, you know, I just think they ought to be, you ought to figure out a way to do this that doesn't jeopardize their right to get their devaluation they need that they feel they're entitled to. Does anybody have a solution?
May I comment?
One moment, if I may. Commissioner Kraft, I have somebody else first. I would like to call on Commissioner Kavanaugh and then Commissioner Kraft.
Thank you. Well, this is clear as mud. Let me start at the top. There are three items here, D, E, and F on our agenda. And are we speaking to all three of these simultaneously? I'm just trying to get clear where we are on this agenda. Are we speaking to D, E, and F? To just D, to just E, to just F? What are we speaking to relative to this question?
Only item E.
E, okay. So in order to move things along, would it be okay to move D and F and set E aside for this consideration only? I mean, D and F do not seem to be in controversy here. Am I correct in saying D and F seem to be just pretty pro forma?
I believe so, but I didn't realize E was such a morass.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to narrow the, narrow the focus of the board so that we can get to a resolution. If we can do that, then I think this discussion relative to E kind of falls in a couple parts. There's a lawyer asking for a continuance. This happens all the time. I don't know why he's not here. If he was in court, he'd have to state a reason why he wants a continuance, not, I can't be here. It's got to be a little more articulated than that, and I don't know if we've heard that reason from this lawyer, but I'm not against continuances. I just like to say, why are you asking for a continuance? And, you know, that's, that's number one. And if that's the case, then is it just these properties that are being asked for a continuance? Just this one page that we just received? Is that correct?
Well, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Boyle's list, as Commissioner Borgeson pointed out, it has some properties on there that there was no Form 425 filed. So it's a confusing list, but essentially, the 43 parcels before you today, 28 of them were submitted by Sean Mullen.
Okay. 43 parcels compiles the list of exhibit E. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. This one page that we were just handed is a subset of those 43 properties. Is that correct?
This is Catherine. To be clear, this was just a document I prepared to aid Commissioner Boyle based on some conversations we had had previously. This one is not an official document associated with the agenda.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify that we're talking about, this is a subset of E. All these properties are on E, correct?
No. Most of them are, not all of them.
Okay. This document, are all the properties on this page being asked to be continued today?
Well, for, for the ones that would, for the ones that are on your list that are also on the list for exhibit E, yes. Or item E, yes.
So just the damage property.
I see. Okay. So how many properties are we talking about continuing today off of E?
Well, if it's, if we're only talking Sean Mullen submitted protest, 28 of the 43.
Okay. And only eight of those Sean Mullen properties are on this list? So there's 20 more on E that are not on this list. Is that correct? I see Sean Mullen's name after eight properties on this one list.
That, you know, he, what you, yes, correct. It's only, his name's only listed on eight, but I know there's more of them that his name didn't show up on that are also on the list of 16 parcels that you have.
Well, I guess I'd say a couple things. Maybe we should take action on D and F and narrow the discussion down to E because it's very confusing to me if we've got an exhibit E and then we have this document, and neither one conforms completely to what's being requested by Mr. Mullen for a continuance. I guess that's kind of confusing, but we got D and F that we could move on.
Thank you for running the meeting. Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, I know Mike Goodwilly is here from the assessor's office. And Commissioner Boyle, here's what I'm worried about because of the two-step process that we have to do. If we don't take action on those today, then we're in a bottleneck on Friday for the assessor's office to be able to look at these properties and then place the Form 425 value on, from the damage that they're, they filed the form on. So I still think that they would have the opportunity, I mean, they did have their opportunity. They went through our Board of Equalization process. So now, even if we set these, they can still come on Friday and argue that that value is not. is not correct, and we want it to be kinda made up, if you will, off of the 425 form. We think because of the damage from January 1 to July 1, the value should be set at this. The assessor's office will work on those between now and Friday, correct? Okay, so, we'll pass this today, they'll take those 425 forms, they will look at what the requested reduction in value is based on the damage from, that these individuals feel from January 1 to July 1. That new value will come back Friday to us, and the property owners will be able to be here and tell us whether or not they agree with that or not. So they'll still get their time before us, it'll be, though, on the new value that the assessor places in front of us based on the 425 form.
Commissioner Boyle.
I think, Commissioner Borgson, I think that what you said sounds reasonable. The concern I have is, well, first of all, I do wanna say to Mr. Kavanaugh that Sean Mullen did call me a couple of weeks ago and ask about what date he'd have to, he had to be here, and I told him, Friday. And he said, I've got a trial starting, and he's out of town and stuff, so that's why he's not here. So it's not like, I'm just not showing up, he's already tied up. He would've moved things had he known this was gonna happen, I think. But in any event, I think you may have hit on the cord, it's fine, I don't have a problem with proceeding, as long as the landlords are protected and they can come back. For example, the first one up here is Westwood Plaza Limited, and it's a $6.7 million requested, it's 2.7 million, and 6.7 is recommended. Are they gonna be able to appeal that?
So the assessor will take that, they'll take the 425 form that's been submitted, and they will look at the reduction and bring that to us on Friday.
Okay, so it'll still be preserved then?
Right.
So that, I'm going, so that you've said that, I'm gonna tell, I'm fine, I'm happy that, then the landlords can still come in and protest their hearts out, they don't have to go to Turk.
Right. They can, if they're not, if they don't agree with us at the end.
But they don't have to.
Right, no, they still have Friday to argue with us the value based on the 425 form.
Is everybody, anybody else, I wanna make sure we don't have any problem with that, 'cause that's what I wanna see, that's, I'm trying to protect the landlord's right to do that. And if that's, we're gonna go on what you said. Thank you, Commissioner Borgson, you just solved the whole deal.
I, so...
We should've had you speak first, instead of me.
Do we have a motion then?
D through F adjourned.
Motion and a second, questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, may we please vote?
Just give me one moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as a Board of Commissioners, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, but not a voting member. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present, thank you. Item one, minutes and claims, A is the approval of minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting last week, item B is approval of claims for payment through Tuesday, August 4th, today. Questions or comments to that motion? Then may we please vote on one A and B?
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us next to the consent agenda, where we find items A through I. A request to pull H6 from consent agenda with Charles Drew Community Health Center and the Health Department. Okay, we have a motion, do we have, and are you agreeable with?
Yes.
H6 not being in there? Okay, then, we have a motion for the consent agenda less H6. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And I don't know if anybody is here from HR, but there's a couple of items on here. But first of all, the item E, financial institutions to be depositories for Douglas County for fiscal year ending 6/30/21. And I don't see Joe Loretz in the body.
He's out of town.
But the list in our packet under E, I guess, Mr. Bloomingdale, maybe you can address this, is that the list of institutions, or is that a different list? In item E? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the...
I don't know if anybody, somebody from the treasurer's here.
Yeah, John Ewing is here.
They can speak to it.
Okay. I know this is pro forma, let the public know, it's kind of an important thing of who we bank with.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just, I'm gonna run through it real quick, and I think this is right. First National Bank, US Bank, Wells Fargo, Bank of Bennington, Great Western Bank, Mutual of Omaha, Core Bank, Great Plains State Bank, is that?
Tim Kavanaugh is here from the treasurer's office, he could speak to that.
Mr. Kavanaugh, if you could just confirm that that's the correct list? I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be, but...
Tim Kavanaugh, the treasurer's office, what, you're talking about E on consent?
Yeah, it's the consent Exhibit E, and it's basically just a financial institutions to be depositories for Douglas County for fiscal year 2021. Just a basic list of who we deposit our money with, correct?
Yes.
Right. And it was those banks, that's all I was looking for, is the confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other one is item I, resolution to approve a one-year renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Nebraska for stop-loss coverage for the county self-funded group medical insurance plan effective January 1, 2021, $16.16 per covered employee per month. And again, this is a HR question, I don't know if anybody's here from there, but I, oh, there we go. Colleen?
If I may direct the board's attention, very briefly, Colleen, back to E, I wanted to, there's a typographical error on the resolution, which I wanted to note, so that Dan could go ahead and correct that. Looking at the resolution, last paragraph, and then now, therefore be it resolved, I believe it should read June 30 of 2021. So these are the depositories through June 30 of 2021. I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you.
Colleen Fredericksen, HR. So, we ended up negotiating a new stop-loss agreement. Our broker went out, we don't know what the cost impact is of COVID right now with our health plan, and as of this time, we have two large claims that could lose some protections with our current stop-loss. So, Lockton was able to renegotiate a stop-loss with added protections, which would entail a 50% cap rate for future renewals beginning 2022. And so it is a modest increase right now, but we're hedging against future large increases. And then, more, with a laser protection for future years.
Okay, the existing agreement that we have with, is it Blue Cross?
Yes.
Okay, for stop-loss. What was the term of that agreement that we're renewing for a year?
That ends on 12/31 of 20. This one, we have until August 10 to make a decision on this one, and they're only including claims until June 30, which is to our benefit, because we've had a couple of very large claims come in in July.
Right, I'm trying to look back, so that the one that we're asked to extend for a year, has that been a year-to-year, or is that, are we extending something that was multi-years?
It's a year-to-year.
Year-to-year.
Yeah, insurance contracts.
So this comes before us on an annual basis?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments to the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for the vote on the consent agenda less item H6.
And E as amended.
And E as amended, thank you.
Commissioners Rogers, okay, there we go. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us back to item H6, amendment two with Charles Drew Community Mental Health Center, Community Health Center, excuse me, regarding women, infants, and children's supplemental nutrition program for additional funding.
Second, well, no, not second. I just wanna, I just wanna state I'm abstaining, 'cause I sit on that board.
I will second the motion. Okay, and Commissioner Rogers is abstaining. So, motion and a second on item H6, questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda, motion passes, five voting yes, Commissioner Rogers abstaining.
Thank you. Recognition and proclamations. First is a recognition honoring Marvel, Dennis Huggins is retiring from the treasurer's office after 23 years of service. Wouldn't somebody like him, make him? Good. I'll go second the motion. Okay. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Today is a bittersweet day for me, as I get to recognize someone that I think is an exemplary employee, and what the Douglas County Treasurer's Office stands for in terms of perseverance, commitment to the citizens of Douglas County, and also to the organization. Marvel, he prefers Dennis, so I had to do the Marvel. Dennis is a guy who was one of the veterans when I started as the treasurer, and you have to have veterans buy into what you're trying to do in order to be successful. And Dennis bought into what Tim and I have been trying to do for the last 13 and 1/2 years in terms of improving customer service. And Dennis also showed a tremendous amount of bravery when we had the armored car robbed out at the 30th Street office. When shots were being fired outside, and he didn't know what was going on, he jumped over the counter and went and locked the door so that the staff could be safe. And so I will never forget that. That was way beyond anything you expect as an employee of the Douglas County Treasurer's Office, and with my background in law enforcement, I know that doesn't always happen. So Dennis, I want to personally thank you for securing the safety of all of the other people there and risking your life to do so. As well as your exemplary service for 23 years, and with that, if you would like to say anything.
No perks, no perks. It's been my honor to work for you guys. I've come through a lot with you guys. I worked with you guys, Mr. Boyle here, way back when the unions have started, when we didn't have it. Ms. Borgson, same thing, over at South Omaha Eagles Hall. Mr. Rogers up there for the different things. Mr. Duda comes down, and he would climb with me down the way a few times, and I've seen him up there, but it's been, it's been a journey, and I've seen the place change and grow, and it's been my honor. I'd like to say thanks for the opportunity to everyone.
Thank you. Don't get anywhere just yet. Commissioner Boyle?
I just wanna say, you know, so often, and particularly in these difficult times, that it's hard to deliver the service that we all want, and John has been trying very hard, and Mr. Kavanaugh as well. I call him Mr. Kavanaugh, I call you John, anyway. But it is, you really are representative, you represent the very best of government service and county employees. You know, you're the face of good service, and heroism is just a bonus that occurred from your instincts and your ethics and your values. But we are so fortunate to have had you working for us and with us for so many years. I can't tell you that anything more than you're just a great example of public service as a public employee, and I personally thank you very much, as do, I know, the taxpayers and citizens of Douglas County as well. Congratulations on retirement.
I appreciate it, we're looking forward to it.
Yes, you got it.
If I may just add, so often, the treasurer's office becomes the face of the county to the public. They, this is the interchange the public has with county government. How wonderful to be so well represented. Thank you for being such a great face for the county for so many people for so many years.
Thank you, appreciate it. You know what? I was going through some health issues, which helped me to make this decision, and the honey-do list is, now it's the get-out-the-way list. You know, 38 years of marriage, I know when to get out the way.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you much. And Patrick up there, I go back to him with Marfizi and some of those things, and we don't have to bump heads anymore.
We've both been around a little while.
It's been great, thanks.
Thank you so much. Could we please vote? Yeah, could we please vote too? Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot.
Motion passes six to zero.
Oh, good. Go ahead and pass.
The press secretary at the office wants to take a photo of you. Can you tell him that? Did he get that message?
I don't think she's in.
Item B, recognition of another county employee retiring, Denise Ray Williams, retiring from the Douglas County Health Center after 16 years of service. Is Denise, okay, have a motion to approve and a second? We do have a resolution for her, we'll get to her as well. Could we please vote on that, Mr. Ash?
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the board on anything that is not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Today, I'd like to kind of point out that there's an awful lot of emergency resolutions going on in the last year or so. Not too far away in the future was because of the president's executive order, there was an emergency resolution to do this and do that, because local governments weren't performing up to speed, I guess. Not too long after that, I guess, everybody got the idea that they could do emergency resolutions for their own resolutions here or the city council, and now they seem to be working together on them. I'd like to remind everybody that our... our Declaration of Independence was to get away from sovereign rule by a monarchy and move towards a republic. We seem to be reversing that with all these emergency orders. And even some of our past council or commissioners that are now presently down at the State House or have been and still sitting in our audience sometimes here are helping coordinate things between a mayor, a council, and a board of commissioners. That smacks of divine sovereign, I'm sorry, not divine sovereign rule rather than some people call a democracy. But it's supposed to be a republic. We have elected our representatives to represent us. And they don't seem to be doing that with these resolutions, these emergency resolutions. So we think it's time the citizens ask you to stop doing that. Going around us down to the State House is not the intent of our election. A good example of that is a recent proclamation, "Whereas's" and "Whereas's" by the Douglas County Board. Of course, Mr. Ben Gray was also involved in that, he's not currently on the board. So here we have collusion between probably the mayor, the city council, and the Douglas County Board. That proves my point. Now they're trying to tell us possibly that everybody in the household, excluding maybe a five-year-old, has to wear a face covering whether we like it or not. I believe that's how things got out of whack with the Germans and the Russians back 1916, 1930s. And then pretty soon they're knocking on the door. How are you going to enforce these things? Are you going to use neighborhood associations and nonprofits such as those that helped with the slum landlord issue here, the K Apartments? To then help you enforce inspections as to who's wearing the mask and who isn't? So you need to back off some of these stuff because you're getting way too much power. Thank you. Oh, and please turn up the volume or speak more into your microphones.
Thank you, Larry. Would anybody else like to address this group under citizen comments? This is your opportunity to do so, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mohammed Jamal. I'm the president of East African Association of Nebraska. I would like to inform that, thanks so much for you doing a great job. I've been here for the last eight years in Nebraska. And I would like to inform that we, as you know, unemployment was ended last week. And many people are from the community where I came from, especially Somali community, are facing for unemployment because it ended by last week. So many people were self-employed employee for like Uber driver, Lyft driver, or taxi driver, or some were self-employment. So those, more than 300 people are facing for challenge for hardship financial issue. So I would like to know that the county, some of our community are facing this problem. As they apply a job every day, but no one hired them for that. If they hired the job, no one hired them, no one called in to review. And people are facing for that challenge. And also there is a lot of business, small business from my community are facing also a challenge of due to COVID-19. Some of them even they almost vacation for their business. So I would like to inform the county if they can do something about that. That's my own concern for today. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mohammed. Would anybody else like to address this board under citizen comments? If not, we will move on to presentations. And first we find the NACO Live Healthy Discount Program and Prescription Discount Cards from Commissioner Borgerson.
Karen's going to do the slideshow for me. But yes, this is the Live Healthy Discount Program that we have been a part of since 2005. And the residents of Douglas County have actually saved over $4.2 million over that course of time on their prescription drugs. And that equates to approximately about $280,000 a year. But what we've done is we've taken the program that's been in existence for quite a while and we've actually improved it through our partnership that we have. And that's what I wanted to address today so that everybody is aware of it. And it's actually quite timely, especially what's going on in our community with the pandemic and folks, again, being laid off or hours cut or insurance costs going up. This could actually be a very beneficial program for our Douglas County residents. So the Live Health Count, Live Healthy Discount Program is available to all residents. And again, it was developed by our National Association of Counties. And it's to offer the discounts on prescriptions, dental treatments, healthcare costs, which include vision, dental, and hearing. And you choose as an individual in however much you want to participate in the program that's available to you. They receive their discount cards at no cost for the prescription drugs, but there is a small fee I'll go through a little bit later for the health and dental discounts available. So the no-cost prescription discounts, the prescription discounts will help individuals, residents with or without insurance to save on their prescription purchases. Residents who have insurance can also use this discount card when their medications are not covered under their current insurance plan. And again, this is a no-cost to our residents. And you can actually use this card for your pets as well if they are taking human prescriptions. And I have actually had a number of requests over the course of time from individuals to send them a card for use for their pets. But the average savings actually has gone up. It started out to be about an 8% to 23%, and now we've got it up to 30% on the price of your medications when you present your card to the pharmacy. There's no coupons to search for, there's no registration. You just present the card and you get the instant savings. Another thing that's included in the improved program are Minute Clinic discounts. And the Minute Clinics is a medical walk-in clinic. They're located inside select CVS pharmacies or Target stores. We actually have two here, one on 48th and Dodge and one on 144th and West Maple. And there you're, the members can actually save up to about 10% on services, up to $10 per person per visit. And what does a Minute Clinic offer? It offers nurse practitioners and physician assistants to provide care for common medical conditions and prescription, prescribed medication. They also do vaccinations, physical and wellness services. There is no appointment necessary in order to use these Minute Clinics. You can stop in anytime that you need care. They're open seven days a week, including evenings and weekends. But again, those hours may vary by the clinic. You can get more information on those on the website, minuteclinic.com locations. The low-fee health discounts, residents have an affordable option to take advantage of health services through the Live Healthy Program. Those and services, again, those services include vision, hearing, diabetes supplies, and telemedicine. In the vision, you can actually save up to 35% on retail price of frames with the purchase of a pair of glasses. Other discounts include your eye exams, your lenses, accessory contact lenses, and more. You have access to over 50,000 providers, including ones like LensCrafter, Perovision, Target, Nationwide, so forth and so on. Again, that list is on the website as well. Hearing, you can receive a complimentary hearing screening and then you can save up to 35% on your, the price of your hearing aids. And again, there are about 2,500 participating locations on, that are providing that service. The diabetes supplies, you can save on the prescription and over-the-counter diabetes supplies. Insulin prescriptions can be discounted through the no-cost prescription discount portion of the program. And then telemedicine, there's unlimited calls with a clinician for the entire family with no consultation fees. So the low-fee dental discounts, you can save up to 50% on most of the services. And there are more than 11,000 dentists and specialists. You can see the services that are included would be your routine and in-depth checkups, your child and adult cleanings, mouth x-rays, and feelings. And here you can see that for those health and dental discount prices, so for an individual, it would be $5.95 and for a family, it would be $7.95. And for dental, it would be $5.95 and $7.95. And then you have the fam, the yearly fee, you could pay a $59 as an individual or $69 as a family for both the health and dental. So in summary, this again is increasing, improving our Live Healthy Discount Program. It is available to all Douglas County residents. It does provide, again, the no-cost prescription discounts as well as low-fee health discounts, dental discounts, and the Minute Clinic discounts. And so we're basically reintroducing it to our community. I will give you each a brochure and then a sample of the card if you want more. Don't hesitate to ask, you can set them out anywhere. We are, we do have a partnership with our Treasurer's Office who will be putting those up in the Treasurers because there's a lot of traffic area in those areas. And then I'll work with our libraries, you know, when they open, to be able to put them in the libraries again. But again, I have sent numerous cards to many people across the years that we've had this program. And I'm very excited that NACO at the national level has worked so hard to improve it and add even more services with this card. And again, just to wrap back around the reason, especially in today's world with the high cost of healthcare from your prescription drugs to all of your health and hearing and dental costs, this can just be of, of help to everybody. Excited to reintroduce it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgerson. $4.2 million of savings, that's impressive. Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
She's passing those out. I just want to say I found those to be very, very useful, particularly, thank you very much, Marianne. In my district, I've run across people, I had somebody stop me in a grocery store the other day, about three weeks ago, and ask me about this. So it really is getting, the word's getting out, and I really appreciate your bringing this back to us. You brought it back a long time ago, so this is just, thanks, keep it up. Thank you very much.
New and improved. Thank you, Marianne. Further questions or comments to that? All right, thank you. We will move to the CARES Act update. Joe Lorenz is not with us this morning, and so it defaults to Patrick. I see Judge Wheelock was just able to join us, and so we can start right in with the district court funding request.
I'm a pretty sad excuse for Joe Lorenz, but I'll do the best I can, so. Yeah, so, gosh, we've made a lot of progress, particularly with, you know, getting that rental assistance agreement approved. And, or the utilities assistance agreement approved, and then rental assistance is going well to start. So those will be next. But right now Judge Wheelock is going to give a presentation along with District Court Administrator Doug Johnson on their request.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, and may it please the board. My name is Horatio Wheelock, and I'm one of your 16 district court judges. I appear before you with the full, with the full support of the entire Douglas County District Court bench.
Judge Wheelock, if I may ask, pull the mic right in front of the PA, the people like on TV. There you go, perfect.
All right, good morning, I will speak into the mic.
Thank you, thank you.
May it please the board, my name is Horatio Wheelock, I'm one of your 16 district court judges. I appear before you today with the full support of the entire district court judge bench here in Douglas County. And in my capacity as presiding judge for the year 2020 and 2021. To the point, I am requesting $650,736 of CARES Act funding for the safety and benefit of all of our great citizens. Let's see here. As of July 28th of 2020, we have about 4.3 million total cases of coronavirus. As of yesterday, when I looked around midnight, we had 4.8 million. In the United States, as of July 28th, 2020, we've had 147,672 deaths. As of yesterday midnight, we had about 158,000 deaths due to COVID-19. In Nebraska, we had, as of July 28th of 2020, 24,899 positive, total positive tests. As of yesterday midnight, we had 26,783 positive tests. In Douglas County, as of yesterday, we had 10,607 positive tests. We have 317 deaths in the great state of Nebraska due to COVID-19 as of July 28th, 2020. And based on my numbers as of midnight yesterday, we had 338 deaths. The bad news is that a vaccine for COVID-19, if one is discovered, according to Bloomberg News Letter, is six months away at the earliest. The worst news that I've discovered in my research is that a shot will eventually wear off. And we're probably going to have to seek another inoculation, probably yearly. Dr. Poor cited that the possibility of mass vaccination will happen next spring. In my research, I, I tend to follow these companies very closely. Oxford University AstraZeneca has something that's very promising, which I'm sure you've heard of in the news. They're in phase three. Phase three means that they're in large-scale efficacy and safety trials. It's the last step before approval. China National Biotech Group is also in phase three. We have Moderna, who is very promising, they're in phase three. We have BioNTech, Pfizer, and Shagai Folsom Pharmaceutical Group Company, all collaborating and working together, they're in phase three as well. We have Cancinho Biologics Incorporated, they're in phase two. And phase two means larger tests for effectiveness are being done. Those I would say are the main ones. There is also Johnson &amp; Johnson, who's working with Emergent Biosolutions, and they're very close, as been told. At best, we have something by the end of the summer. More than likely, we have something next year. From a treatment standpoint, the only drug that's been approved is remdesivir, and that's by Gilead. And that's to assist people who are on ventilators. And that has been met with great success. So that's our current situation as to where we are today. The Nebraska Supreme Court, in an order dated June 30th of 2020, stated, if a court is holding any in-person proceedings or meetings, the court shall holding any in-person proceedings or meetings, the court shall outline, by local order or otherwise, at least one or more of the following measures to reduce the transmission or COVID-19 to staff, counsel parties, and other participants. Screening of individuals for symptoms and exposure to COVID-19, social distancing, spacing requirements in courtrooms and offices, use of masks, providing hand sanitizer, and/or sanitizing highly touched surfaces in areas where court services and proceedings are I'm happy to report that the District Court Bench has been doing all of those things. Whether we like it or not, our reality is that COVID-19 has catapulted us at least five years in the future, since March of 2020. And what I mean by that is, when March of 2020 happened, we had to do something in order to make sure that our great citizens had access to the courts, had access to the judges, and had access to justice. And in the meanwhile, making sure that their constitutional rights are protected, and that they're able to avail themselves of all of those things. And the way we are able to accomplish that through quarantines and court closures is through the use of technology. On a zero budget, because at the time, there was, even if we had multimillion dollars, there's no technology to buy because everybody had purchased it already, we were able to scramble and make it happen for our citizens. And now, in order to continue to give the best possible customer service that our citizens demand and deserve, I'm here before you asking for $650,736. Here's the breakdown. I want to talk about the OHA building remodel last. The first thing I want to talk about is the courtroom conferencing center, courtroom video conferencing. I have a picture of it here, juvenile court has four of these. This is a 65-inch screen TV, much like the one you have up on the wall there. In the middle, I guess the pointer doesn't work very well on the TV, but in the middle you'll see a video camera with microphones and speakers, and it's all on a stand. This works exceptionally well, because if you're technologically challenged, like a lot of my friends are, literally, all you have to do is press a button from your computer, and you are connected to this device. This device costs about $4,200. For my courtroom, which is courtroom 410, which is the smallest courtroom in the building, this would work great. For somebody like Judge Burns' courtroom, this concept will work exceptionally well, but he doesn't necessarily need that stand. He'll be able to mount a TV, or two, in his courtroom, he'll be able to mount that video camera, and the microphones will pick everything up. We've budgeted approximately $5,000 per courtroom. We're getting the 17th judge one year from today, or a little less than one year from today, and I've included that 17th judge in the budget. We would be up and running with this device in less than two to three months, two to three months is the goal. Why is this important? In a moment, I'm going to get to the numbers of WebEx hearings, Zoom meetings, Zoom hearings I've had. During the quarantine, during the shutdown, you may have seen in the Omaha World-Herald, I was on the front cover of that newspaper, and I was appearing in quarantine from home. I never missed a day of work, I never missed a hearing, and we are able to keep the process rolling for our citizens. People were getting released from custody, saving the taxpayers at least $110 a day, as opposed to waiting the two weeks so I could get back to work. This is the future, this is where we are today. Are we making it happen with a zero budget? We are, admittedly, we are, but we won't be able to keep up with the technology unless we have this system. The juvenile court has four of these, and it's worked exceptionally well, it's been tested, and it's been proven. I want to talk about the courtroom sound system. The courtroom sound system is very important. Currently, we have nine courtrooms that have been furnished with the courtroom sound system. I'm going to describe what it is in a moment. We've done, we've been able to get that through grants, I believe it's through JAG grants. We have two more grants that we'll be able to implement this year, so that'll be a total of 11 courtrooms. We have five more courtrooms, it costs $25,000 per courtroom. So what we're requesting is five courtrooms at a price of $25,000 to be completed before December. Why is this important? Because it parlay's and it acts as a synergistic effect with this system. It also is extremely important to have that in place, because now that we've started the jury trial process, we have to abide by the Supreme Court's order, we have to abide by Dr. Poor's directives and guidelines, the CDC, and the way we're doing our juries now is, it's literally the jurors, the litigants, the attorneys, and the judge, and the court reporter. We have to have accessibility to the public, and we're using a second courtroom to televise the entire trial. It has to be done by short, what I would call short-circuit TV or closed-circuit TV. The reason I can't put it on Facebook or on YouTube so that people can watch it at their house is because we can't have people recording and then sending out these recordings to other parties, there's a legitimate safety concern. I requested special permission from the Supreme Court to conduct the trials in this manner, because there's a court rule that says you can't broadcast trials, period. And the Supreme Court met last week and gave it their blessing, so that has been approved. Safety's number one. This will ensure that the sheriff's deputy will be in a courtroom, or a room, just like we are here today, and that nobody's videotaping or has their cell phone videotaping testimony. Everybody, it'll be completely 100% open to the public, just like these hearings are, and they'll be in a courtroom in the same building, spectating the trial that's happening Courtroom access control. I call this the Ring Doorbell System. And the reason I call it that is if you go to federal court, if you go to Sarpy County, if you go to Lancaster County, basically if you go to any other courthouse other than what we have here, the way you're getting access to the bailiff into the chambers of the judge is you click a button, and there's a video camera where the bailiff and the judge have access to, and an intercom system. The reason this is important is we need crowd control. If you come into my courtroom, and I know Commissioner Boyle has been there several times, because we're on the United Way Committee together, my vestibule area, the waiting room area, is very, very small. At most, if I pack people in, I could get five people there, including my bailiff. None of that is socially distanced. We need the ability to be able to redirect people, to go to the courtroom, to be able to speak to members of the public, to direct them where they need to go, so that they have complete access to us. This is a very important safety issue that all courtrooms throughout the United States have currently implemented for the last 20 years. The way it's related to COVID is, we need to be able to redirect people and speak to them so that they can be at the appropriate place. They need access to us, and they would have it with this system. Under no circumstances would this mean that a courtroom would be closed. The courtrooms would be open at all times, this is just to be able to get into the vestibule area. I want to talk about the OHA building remodel. Currently, the only place we have available to pick juries is in here, in this wonderful courtroom setting. Before this pandemic started, I can tell you that I've picked at least three juries here, and the reason for that is because it's a great, it's a great place. I can't fit the amount of jurors that I need for murder cases and double murder cases, and I always pick this place to do it. Right now, everybody needs this place, because there's meetings that occur, we're here on a Tuesday, obviously, and what we are requesting is the OHA building, which is located just east of the MED building, and just west of the library building, literally sandwiched in between each other. We're requesting to remodel the second floor and some of the first floor. I'm going to show you a schematics of what we're talking about here. If you can follow my mouse, you'll see that this is the area where the court and counsel would sit, and then all of these individual places, they're all six feet apart, socially distanced, we can fit, I believe, 45, 40 or 45 in this area. In the second area, which is this part of the second floor, we would be able to fit an additional 35 or so. The total amount of people that would fit into this remodeling project would be 75-plus court staff, court reporter, citizens accused, and/or litigants. The reason this is important is we need an alternative venue to be able to pick the juries. I've been working very diligently with Mr. Leahy, Douglas Johnson, on what this would cost. They've met with architects, my understanding, and I got something covering the cost, I'm not sure how to take that off, but it's $300,000. Go ahead. That was easy. Thank you. What that would include would be the sound system that we've talked about, the camera that we would need for the overfeed courtroom, any demolition, and any construction work. That's very important, because we need those accommodations in order to continue to provide access to the courts, access to justice, to our citizens accused. The bottom line is we need to move the cases, we need to be able to have the trials, and we need to be able to have the places to pick it. And my understanding, based on the schematics, is that this was an appropriate place. I have walked it myself, I have literally been in the elevator, as if I were a handicapped person, it's taken me up to the floors, I've been in the bathrooms, and it's a wonderful facility, it is at our disposal, we have the complete backing of Mr. Leahy, and I think that this will be absolutely terrific to do so. I want to talk about, the last thing I want to talk about is the phone upgrade. I've been told that to upgrade the District Court phones, it would be a total cost of $75,000, which in all candor, I think is a lot of money. What we need immediately, to be able to give the litigants, the lawyers, access to justice, is 30% of that. 30% of that would entail the bailiffs, which are 16 bailiffs at this point, the court administrator's office, which was open during the entire pandemic, they were fielding all the calls for everybody that was in quarantine. We do not have the ability to forward phone calls right now, folks. If somebody, if my bailiff is in quarantine, nobody is there to answer the phone, and it's extremely difficult to forward phone calls. That's what I've been told, and at the very least, if we can just have 30% of $75,000, which is $22,500, that is me being fiscally conservative, okay? That is me being intellectually honest with you all. That'll give us the ability to forward the phone calls so that we can give people, so that we can call people back. That includes the court administrator's office, the 16 bailiffs, the Veterans Court, the Conciliation Court, who handles all the mediations, who desperately asked me to plead with you to please give us those funds, and the Drug Court. It does not include, there's about 100 other phones, we don't need that yet. We can make do with what we have if you just are kind enough to give us the $22,500 for that project. I want to show you this picture. This is the picture of me appearing from my dining room table for 14 days in court. I handled five-hour hearings in this manner. I used, this was on a zero budget, this is all borrowed equipment, none of this equipment is mine, other than the laptop, and when I say mine, I mean the taxpayers. Other than the Purell, the Appeal Kleenex box, and this laptop, this is it. Everything else, this is all borrowed equipment, none of it belongs to courtroom 410 or the District Court. So we were able to do this on a zero budget, but now the schematics are changing, and Really, what I want to tell you is this, these are the numbers from the Douglas County Correctional Facility, based on the hearings that we've had in the month of April, May, and June. As you can see these numbers, compared to the federal court, immigration, juvenile court, and any other, we are Douglas County Correctional Facility's best customer. We are moving cases quickly, efficiently, and really, on a daily basis. We started off in April of 2020 with 288 cases, we've gone up, May of 2020, to 301. June of 2020, we're at 324, and my latest numbers that I got yesterday from Ms. Bogunowski is that we handled 325 cases via WebEx from the Douglas County Correctional Facility. The reason this is important is because, I promise you, this process is working out very effectively, very efficiently, people are not sitting in jail. The idea is, they don't need to spend another second in there if they don't have to, let's get them out. We need, we need, we need to stay focused on this, because that prevents the spread. Today, as we speak, you probably haven't been able to look at your emails because you're here, there's a spread at the jail, they've stopped transporting prisoners. I had a prisoner that was, that the lawyer requested a life sentencing on. I called Ms. Bogunowski, and we were able to get it done at 9:30 sharp, which is the time they were supposed to be here, by way of WebEx. They were here last week, and they were, you all were kind enough to give them about $4.7 million for technology advancements. We need to stay on the same course with them, because what we have now is outdated and not appropriate. Between Douglas Johnson, who's got a million hats on, we're working magic to try to make these hearings happen on a daily basis, and I firmly believe that if we have access to this money, we will be able to effectively, efficiently, ensure that all of our citizens' constitutional rights are protected, that they have access to the courts, and that we continue, and I really firmly believe this, that we continue to give excellent customer service to all of our citizens. This is, this is truly a nonpartisan issue, in my humble opinion. I am requesting, I'm humbly requesting unanimous support on this. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks, Judge, I appreciate this. And thanks for your good work during this crisis, it's a struggle for everybody, and I know that you've been doing your best to provide justice and access to justice, and that's, that's real important. So you were doing this remotely from your home for a couple of weeks, are you still doing that?
I come in every day. What ended up happening was, I had flown in from Europe, and I think it was a Thursday before President Trump issued the travel ban. And at the time, I called my doctor, and she says, "If you're feeling fine, go to work." I called the chief, and he said, "If you're feeling fine, go to work." This is before we knew things, right? This is before we knew things, right? And I thought to myself, you know, I better play this one safe because the last thing I want to do is infect anybody, and I'm going to self-quarantine.
Right.
So that's what I did. And to answer your question, when I came back, then we had the outbreak in the courthouse, and then the majority of my bench was quarantined. So I was back, and everybody, I came back to basically everybody else being quarantined.
Yes, I know that because my wife was as well.
Well, you know firsthand, you probably heard some of these WebEx and Zoom meetings I was having with your wife.
Right. So let me ask you this. You know, there are requirements, legal requirements, for confrontation, it's called. And that's a small portion of what the courts do. But are attorneys and clients required to come into your courtroom where there is no legal requirement for confrontation purposes, for hearings or dispositions or anything?
The way, the way I handle the hearings is very diplomatically. I say, "Okay, how would you like to do this hearing? You want to do it by Zoom? If it's a non-evident hearing, we're trying to promote WebEx and Zoom as much as possible." For somebody who's in custody, if the citizen's accused lawyer requests an in-person hearing, then I grant it, and I request that all parties appear in person, you know, abiding by all the proper rules and whatnot. But we, as a whole, are trying to do as many hearings as possible by way of audiovisual equipment. But always keeping in mind that somebody's, a citizen's accused constitutional rights in a criminal case are paramount, and they will always be, at least in my courtroom, respected and honored.
Sure. And those are exactly the cases I'm not asking about.
Okay.
What I'm asking about is everything else. Are you requiring people to come in for non-confrontational?
No. I am not requiring anybody to come in. I've had several hearings where, in fact, I've had a, you know, there's several attorneys that are perhaps sixty-five or seventy years old.
Sure.
Who say, "Judge, I'm afraid, I don't want to appear." I said, "No problem." I put them on Zoom, all right? They're appearing by Zoom, and then the attorney who does want to appear with their client appears in person, and we have the hearing in that manner. And it's worked out great.
Sure. Is there a district court mask order that's uniform along all courts? How do you handle the mask question?
It's a very, as you know, as this board knows, it's a very difficult question. As you can see, I'm wearing a mask here today. I wear a mask at all times. I promote, I have masks available for all persons who wish to wear a mask in my courtroom. As of right now, I can tell you that everybody's worn a mask, and it has not been a problem. So I have not had to basically enforce anything.
I understand in your courtroom, but you're saying there's no standard mask policy in the sixteen district courts?
Each court, the answer is there is no standard policy.
Okay. So there are courts of masks are not being worn in?
That I can't answer. I think that the majority of courts.
Okay.
People are wearing masks. And I will tell you this. I was fortunate enough to give some good training to a lot of my fellow brethren. And all of us, and you can see with those statistics in the PowerPoint, they're all, we're all doing the Zoom hearings, we're all doing the WebEx.
Yep. I see. In the OHA building, maybe it's in here, I just didn't see it. How many square feet are we talking about?
I will have to ask Mr. Leahy.
Oh, that's fine. We can get it later. I just thought you might know.
It's the second floor. The whole second floor.
Right, right. Well, that's good because some time ago, we purchased that building with no use in mind, and so it's just been sitting there vacant. I'm glad that you'll get some use out of that.
I certainly hope to.
This phone system that you're talking about, the county has, you know, a phone system.
Right.
Four-four-four, seven-thousand, whatever. You can get any phone in the county. Is there a reason that we would have to have a separate phone system under this?
From what I've been told, the Douglas County Attorney's Office, and I'll ask Mr. Douglas Johnson to fact-check me on this, but I've been told that everybody's upgraded their phone system except for the district court. I know that, I asked a prosecutor today, they have the upgraded phone system. We're the last ones. And what I've been told is that in two or three years, the Centrix phone system, which is what I believe we have, will be completely obsolete. So the idea behind the phone system is only for the bailiffs. That's why I'm only asking for a small percentage of the total cost.
So if I call you?
Can we kind of wrap this up? Your five minutes are up. Commissioner.
Okay, well, I'll come back for another five. I've got a couple more.
I did have a question, Your Honor. When you said thirty percent of the phones, is that you're only replacing thirty percent of the phones at this point? And that's why it would only be thirty percent of the total cost?
Correct.
Doug's saying something different.
Oh, I'll hear from Doug then.
Doug Johnson, District Court Administrator. My understanding is we would replace all the phones because we'd have to do it, all of the district court phones, and I would use the other seventy percent out of general fund money. But we are being forced to do this from dot com, so it's an initiative that has to be done because the Centrix phone system is being obsolete, and they can't support it anymore.
So the plan would be thirty percent of the funding would come from CARES Act and seventy percent from dot com?
Correct.
Thank you.
And if I may?
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Over the years, we've talked about night court. I see this as a potential to bring in night court and perhaps a Saturday court because we have so many judges, so many cases, and limited to the court.
We lost your sound mark.
I didn't hear you.
Okay, you're, I think you're back on mark.
I see this as an opportunity where we could integrate a night court in the future. We've been talking about night courts for years and the difficulty and the expense. And I think this would take away the difficulty and a lot of the expense of a night court. So let's just give this additional consideration. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Kraft stole my thunder. I've talked about night court and weekend court since I got on this board, but wanted to see if we could have that discussion because, again, I agree that this may be the perfect time to implement such a thing via the Zoom and technology that you're requesting. I want to thank you for the cooperation. I have heard nothing but great things out of our corrections facilities, from the courts, from dot com folks, about the cooperation everybody has done during this pandemic to rearrange and do business differently. We, as government, you know, does never shut down, and we didn't. We just did things, found ways to do our business differently. And your request today, I think, proves that you have done that. But again, to your point, I think we will be continuing to do business like this for a very long time. And so I think your request is a good request, a thorough request. And again, I mostly appreciate the cooperation that everybody has shown during this time so that we can try to move, again, individuals out of our correction facility as quickly and safely as we possibly can. Can I ask one last question on the mental health issues? You know, we've, we've worked over the years on a mental health court. We don't have a mental health court yet, but are you seeing or needing anything in particular when it comes to the mental health hearings? Because I would be very interested in making sure that individuals don't spend undue time or any time in our jail based on mental health issues.
So the way that's been addressed, and once again, not, to tie in the technology, okay? All of our hearings through the Douglas County Correctional Center are done through WebEx. The public defender's office has an excellent person, Ms. Wetzel, who has done a magnificent job of really screening people and trying to get them into appropriate mental health facilities. What I mean by that is appropriate homes, appropriate counseling. So the way that that's worked because of this pandemic, I told you, we fast-forwarded five years in the future overnight, is literally by way of email, I get, you know, a request. Usually, the prosecutor responds, and this happens on Sundays, by the way. So you talk about weekend court, it's happening. I work quite a few hours, and I work almost seven days a week in one way or another, and I'm happy to do it. It's, I don't expect everybody to do it. For me, it's a passion, it's a love, it's a devotion. But I get emails, and then the prosecutor will say, "Yeah, we're on board with this." So a lot of times, if we have to have a hearing, I call Cynthia Bogunowski, and we can have a hearing that afternoon or within the hour, if she can accommodate us. Or at the very least, if it happens on a weekend, there's been occasions where they'll send me an order, and then I have, you know, everything that I do from the office, I can also do from home. And I can file things from home too, as well, through the judge portal. And this is all stuff that happened because of this pandemic. So to answer your question, that's one way we've addressed the mental health issue, is getting them out of custody and getting them, getting that citizen accused into the appropriate mental health facility. Through my work with the Veterans Court, we deal with mental health issues all the time, right? And we have an incredible staff. I mean, Judge Gleason has done a magnificent job, and I'm proud to support him in my supporting role with the Veterans Court. And then we have the United Way, where people are out on community service, they're not in custody, where we have to pay the hundred-and-ten or hundred-and-twenty dollars, I don't know what it is anymore, hundred-and-twenty-five, something like that. And even though that's been shut down a little bit because of COVID, you know, the community service hours, the United Way has done a magnificent job. I mean, Lori is a saint, you know, with the amazing work she's done there. So Veterans Court, Drug Court, just the practice that I just described to you, you know, Ms. Kavanaugh from the Douglas County Public Defender's Office, she would email me, you know, "Let's get this person out of jail," and it would happen, and she was doing it from her house. She was running an efficient operation while she was on quarantine. While I was on quarantine, it was happening. So the system works, and it's the technology that we need to continue to have in order to make it even better.
Right. So lastly, again, if there's something additional that you were in need of to address the mental health issues, I would just be interested in that. Doesn't have to be today, just as we move along here. If there are issues specific to mental health that we can do better, I would be very interested in those discussions.
Absolutely. I'll keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I just wanted to say to the judge, you know, this is, I have a working relationship with you, and it's really terrific. Your efficiencies are well-known, and so is the district courts, for that matter. You folks do, I think, in my view, a very good job of stretching the dollars and doing the very best you can. And this is just another indication of the kind of cooperation that we've had with the bench, and I personally approve it. And we're accused of a lot of things, but actually, we don't make decisions on partisanship, and I, we would never, never do that, and I know the judges don't as well. So this is a matter of being a good citizen, as you have been, and we are going to try to do the same. And I'm very much in favor of your programs. You've really done a great job of carving out what needs to be done at a very reasonable price. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
Commissioner? Oh, go ahead. I'll defer.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to say really quick that I see, although I see this is really pro forma, we will be speaking with Deloitte about this request, just to make sure that everything is copacetic, which I have absolutely no doubt that it will be. But when you make the motion to approve this request, I just ask that you just throw in that contingent upon that Deloitte review.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just a couple of quick ones. You noted, and I commend you for the, a fast track that we're trying to implement to get people out of corrections and lower the census population. Can you tell us, and if you don't know, just say we don't, we can get it, if the census population of Douglas County Correction Center has gone up, stayed the same, or gone down since the onset of the pandemic?
I don't know the answer to that question.
This jury trial thing, and I see that Mr. Friend is here, and maybe he could step in, regarding the panels, this is a big group of people that you bring together for a jury panel, and you've got to seat them someplace and then bring them into the courtroom for Dyer. This last one that I think occurred ended up in a mistrial because there was, in the trial, someone who tested positive and posed a danger. Have there been other trials other than that one that kind of went off the rails?
Sure. The answer to, the direct answer to your question is no. There's been many that, in the month of July, there were three trial, four trials that were, three or four trials that were set. The one ended in the mistrial, the other two, which were murder cases, settled, which means that there was a plea. So we had a sixty-six percent success rate. The one that was, that ended up in a mistrial, if I may address that briefly, I know that Judge Polk did a magnificent job of doing everything he could in order to make sure that all the safeguards were in place. I will tell you that the lesson learned, and this once again dovetails to our request, is the person who, my understanding may have, may have tested positive, or at least was experiencing symptoms, was not a witness, was not a juror, was not any of the litigants. It was a family member of the citizen accused. So that's why we're trying to implement now the overflow courtrooms, to make sure that all press and family members and any bystander, instead of being in the courtroom where it's happening, will be, you know, just down the hall, where they'll be able to essentially kind of, what we're doing here, broadcasting this to the public, right? So that's, that's the lesson learned. We're trying to create as much of a bubble, like the NBA, in making sure that we have all safeguards in place.
That's great. Now, these jury panels themselves, and the assembly rooms, they're actually, correct me if I'm wrong, under Mr. Friend's supervision. Is that correct?
He is, he is in charge.
Okay. And he's here, and I presume joins in with the OHA idea as kind of a jury assembly forum. Is that correct, Mr. Friend?
Yes.
Thank you. Currently, do we have the capacity here to seat a jury panel?
My understanding is what we have the capacity to sit, to seat in this wonderful facility is a jury panel, a veneer of seventy-five persons that are socially distanced, six feet apart, if you open the entire area up. The limitations we have are Mondays, we can, we can seat a jury of about forty, thirty-five. Tuesday, we obviously have hearings like we're having now, so the use of the building is not available at that point. And then we've been able to Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, make some accommodations. However, the caveat is General Paul Cohen has been wonderful to work with. He is a great man, somebody who I have great admiration and respect for. But the general can do only so much. You know, everybody, now that the moratorium on voting by telephone or voting by Zoom has expired, so to speak, everybody's trying to get in here because everybody needs to be socially distanced in order to abide by Dr. Poor's guidelines and the governor's guidelines. So that's, so it's becoming a huge struggle. And unfortunately, we're going to be in this situation for a long time. So the use of the, and I know it's a lot of money that I'm requesting. Trust me, I am a fiscal conservative to no end. I have counted every single penny. I've asked to cut, 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 okay? But, but, but it's, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't necessary. This isn't a want, it's a necessity.
Thank you, Judge. And believe me, I think it's very, very appropriate. It's not a question of money. You know, you do an essential service in providing justice to our society. It's an essential component of our democracy. You have been very, very reasonable in this. I think that everything you ask for should be approved, and, you know, going forward, this isn't the end of it. I mean, as you noted, this is trial and error, and there may be other things, so don't be reluctant in coming back to us. And you're well-served by Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Friend, thank you as well for your participation in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this issue? Questions or comments?
Second.
Let me, let me- Let me, let me get the motion first. We have a motion to contingent on Deloitte's approval.
And I second.
And we have a second. Okay, now is the opportunity for comment to the motion.
Well, Mr. Storey's coming up. It's for $650,736. Is that the total? We're...
Is that the maker?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you. Larry Storey, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. Does anybody else get the feeling that we're moving towards 1984, Soylent Green? Very good presentation by the judge, but are we using this health crisis to shut things down for a reason? We're going to take human interaction out of our courtrooms now completely? And in today's age, we can't forward calls? What happened to Omaha and Douglas County? We used to be a telecommunications powerhouse. We started the telemarketing industry and built a huge telecommunication center. What happened? I guess we lost it. You can't forward calls in the justice system? Okay, I've been to some hearings and thank God, when I got in trouble a few times, there were people there because I could see the emotions of the people. I could feel the emotions, particularly of a judge. With these televised things, there are none. And with the cable systems here, often the people watching at home aren't seeing what's going on behind the scene, not seeing the interaction of the people, the communications. So, all right, it's just a short, quick move to 1984. Words matter. There's utopia, there's dystopia. There's open court, there's closed court. A couple of hearing in Lincoln, a televised video thing where, yeah, all the lawyers in the peanut gallery, citizens, could sit and watch that monitor, a very cold process. And in the process, the lawyers are all making noise. We're just outside next to the courtroom. So, yeah, in that situation, maybe a judge should do that and shut it down for just video altogether because the lawyers were able to mess it up so that the citizens that were listening and watching couldn't hear. So, yeah, let's just do total video. But then what happens? Well, I know you people have a different view of things from the other side than I do, and so does a judge in a courtroom. But a judge is supposed to be the one to take everything into consideration. It depends on who presents what to him. I remember years ago, ladies and gentlemen, where a judge told me to get out of his court, her courtroom, because somebody said that older gentleman had a recording device. This is a transistor radio, for God's sakes. She wasn't started yet, the court was not in session, I still had the earplug in my ear, but somebody perceived me walking in there with a recording device. But they didn't perceive everybody sitting there with their cell phones and their computers. The lawyers, yes, but so people in the audience also. Didn't want to hear that that was a transistor, just escorted him out of the courtroom. Five or 10 minutes later, you know what? They escorted about 14 other liberal ladies out of there, too. So now, if we go to this, we don't have to deal with that. So just please be careful, Judge. Think of the other input to this. The revolution in France, the Committee of Safety, had a quick hearing. There wasn't much discussion before they put them in the cart and took them to the guillotine. Pretty soon, we're going to have the furnace, all of the transportation to the juveniles, we could have a conveyor belt. We can drop them off at the porch, put them on the conveyor belt, right into the juvenile court. Don't have to have, don't have to have a garage. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I just want to say, this is one time I get to answer you, Larry. I'd say, first of all, there's nothing to complain about on this proposal. This is going to be a good deal and, and if your mother were here, she'd say, Larry, put your mask up over your nose. But anyhow, so the other thing is that, you know, the important thing is when you're a party to a case, you obviously are in the courtroom, and that's what the judge was talking about. So this is the best solution that I've heard come up to handle these problems. So I commend the district court for coming forward and the presiding judge to make such an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And put it up on your nose like your mom wants you to.
We, we have a motion before us. Further questions or comments to the motion on the floor? If not, I would ask for the vote. The motion is to approve $650,736 for District Court pending Deloitte's concurrence.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Community Mental Health Center funding request.
So Sheri is on the phone. She had a sick kid, so she couldn't, couldn't make it today, but she's on the phone. And then I believe that there's somebody else here.
Mike Phillips is here.
Oh, Mike. Come on down.
Sheri, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you see your presentation up, Sheri?
Yes, thank you. I can see it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. First and foremost, I would like to apologize for not being there in person, but I think due to the state of the pandemic and the unique circumstances we're under, it was prudent for me to remain at home during this time. So I wanted to start out with the presentation for the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center and the needs that our executive team, management team, and employees have come up with that we think would be relevant related to the CARES Act. Onto page two, please. Thank you. So our total request is a modest $320,112. We did vet this with Deloitte, Mr. Lorenz and Patrick Bloomingdale as well on July 30th. So the items before you have been pre-approved and are in the following categories. The first category is furnishing, technology upgrades, and then environmental upgrades. Page three, please. When we are talking about furnishings for the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, inpatient outpatient and social detoxification services, the things that we are looking at is a total, I, I don't want to say renovation because that's not the right terminology, I apologize, but having items in our clients' rooms on the inpatient unit, those 16 beds that we have, that are cleanable fixtures that allow for physical distancing, we're trying not to utilize the word social distancing right now with our mental health programs. So we're using physical distancing. Currently, in the confined space that we have, and many of you have toured our units, there is not areas within those units for clients to be able to eat in a socially distanced manner. So currently, they are all eating in their rooms. Their rooms are not set up in an appropriate manner to do so. The only things in those rooms that they have right now are their beds that are mounted to the floor. So we are looking at redoing those rooms and having the furniture and fixture items in each of those rooms that are easily sanitizable by the cleaning supplies utilized at the Douglas County Health Center. The other thing that that allows for is a desk that's anchored to the wall and a chair that can't be thrown, so they can actually have a place where they can physically sit down and eat. The other thing that we are doing in regard to, in regard to that, is having a rocking chair in there that's an extremely heavy one. It's made for psychiatric units. So when clients are in their rooms and we need to quarantine them or we need to try and physically distance them for the other clients due to concerns of potential COVID, they have some other things that they can do in, in their rooms. The reason we're picking the extremely cleanable furnishings is so we can better, when a client leaves, those can be easily cleaned, sanitized appropriately, dried quickly, so we can bring another client in, hoping to maximize the number of individuals that we can bring into our, bring into our unit. Page four, please, Karen. Thank you. The other thing that we have found is our current transport chairs and our restraint boards are not easily cleanable. So it's imperative for us to have items that don't have foam on them, that are items that can be cleaned and sanitized when we need to transport a client from our emergency holding room that's on the main floor, or the psychiatric outpatient clinic, up to the psychiatric admission, or if we need to transport somebody, and this does happen from five east, if they're not doing well, we have to transport them back over onto the PIC unit. And we have to be able, for the client's safety, we have to be able to easily clean those items. The other thing that we are looking at is a blood draw table for our outpatient unit that is on casters. What we are doing with any client currently that we are concerned if they've got, have been exposed to COVID, if they have symptoms, that they absolutely need to come in for blood draw for medical reasons, we still want to make sure they get their psychiatric injectables on time so they don't decompensate, we are going to be able to take that blood draw table down to our emergency holding area, which is an entrance straight into the facility, into that room. So these individuals will not go anywhere else in our facility. Our nurse that's in full PPE will be able to go to that patient and safely provide them with that. They will exit out that same door and will not enter anywhere else into, into the building, which is extremely imperative during these challenging times that we have. The other thing that we are looking for is a commercial washer and dryer for our social detoxification program. Due to the nature of the clients that we serve in civil protective custody and social detox, many individuals homeless, unfortunately, many individuals are coming in extremely soiled. We need to assure that we are getting their clothes commercially cleaned and sanitized. We do not contract with a provider, an outside company, to do that. Our social detoxification staff do all of those things. Page four, please, or five, please. The next category we have is technology upgrades for the Community Mental Health Center. I believe that our staff have done a phenomenal job during these challenging times to try to meet the needs of our clients in the best ways possible telephonically. We're doing that with both medication management and we are also, we are also doing that with therapy services. There has been approval by the state and by Medicaid to continue to pay for telemedicine services at least through the end of October, and I believe that will go farther into the future due to the pandemic that we are in. So what we are going to try to do is implement doctor first, which is a telemedicine product that works with our current electronic health record, which is Meditech, and it will have an interface with Meditech. So the technology upgrades will include all of the things that we need to be able to do to successfully do that. This will allow us to be, actually to be able to safely and securely, following all of HIPAA and 42 CFR guidelines, to see patients who have the ability to do that instead of only being able to see them on the telephone. That will, again, reduce the number of individuals that need, that need to come into the clinic. So I think that's a good thing as well. We are looking for thermal temperature cameras for our social detoxification services. All of the police officers and clients that come in immediately hand sanitize, go through temperatures, and go through COVID screening. This will allow for them to go through that temperature screening and the staff not to have to step into their physical proximity to have to do that temperature screening. We are looking for iPads that our social detox and inpatient clients can utilize throughout our facilities. This will allow for additional FaceTime opportunities with their family members. It allows for, if they have time, that they need to be in their room, we can have specific educational items that we're going to be doing with those clients through those, through those iPads. Karen, you're ahead of me. Great job. Okay, environmental upgrades. So in our psychiatric outpatient clinic, the lobby phone, due to the inability to clean that regularly, was removed and our clients frequently utilize that phone in the main lobby. So we've, we are needing to install a phone in our clinic lobby. This allows for clients to call the primary healthcare clinic when they need to, and it also allows for them to set up their rides through Moby when they need to be picked back up after they've completed an appointment. Cabinets and counters that can be easily sanitized is absolutely imperative, so we are looking at those. Touchless sinks for the social detoxification program. And then we are also looking at touchless water fountains, so we can, we can use those as well. It's like a water filling station. So do you, that's the end of my presentation. I know that was, that was very quick. The person in front of me was kind of a hard act to follow, but do you have any questions for the Community Mental Health Center?
What, what's the dollar figure we're talking about here, Sheri?
It is on the second page, the top of the second page, 320, just a little over $320,000.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Ms. Glassner? Commissioner Boyle?
Sheri, I'll just make a comment. I think you're doing a terrific job over there and I think this is a very reasonable request and as, as you know, if something comes up that you need more help, please let us know because you're working in a very important area that all of us are very concerned about. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I, Ms. Glassner, I would echo Commissioner Boyle's sentiments about the excellent job and the presentation is very well done, and I think all of these are needed upgrades in light of the COVID pandemic. So kudos on putting this together. The services that you provide are essential to our community and so having these resources to help you do this safely during the pandemic is a good thing and we appreciate you coming forward with us. There may be other needs that you find going forward and so please don't be shy about coming back to us if there are supplemental concerns. I know that things that we haven't anticipated have been coming up all year, so it wouldn't be surprising if you had to come back to us.
That is, that is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay. Further comments? What is the pleasure of the... I assume you want to say about Deloitte?
No, it's already been vetted.
Okay, this one's been vetted. So simply the motion to approve, the figure is 320,000?
112, I believe.
112.
320,112.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Further questions or comments to the motion? If not, may we please vote?
Oh, you know what? Hold on a second. I'm sorry, commissioners.
Oh.
We'll tell you what, I will just note, the motion passed six to zero. I had the wrong, I had just, I just had the generals' CARES Act item highlighted instead of the mental health center funding, but the Community Mental Health Center funding of 320,112 passes six to zero.
Thank you. And you really do miss Ellen's flying fingers on your little computer over there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, rental assistance update. Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. Still morning. Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance. I am going to cover, again, just a brief overview of the program in case anybody has not heard of it and is interested in applying, and then I'm going to give everyone some statistics for our first week live. Again, this program is meant to assist low to moderate income Douglas County residents with unpaid rent due to COVID-19-related hardship. Low and moderate income is 100% AMI, area median income or below. Assistance shall not exceed four months of a household's rental need or maximum benefit of $4,000, whichever comes first. General requirements, Douglas County resident, U.S. citizen, or qualified resident alien, had a household gross income at or below 100% of the area median income, applicants listed on the rental/lease agreement, income was negative, negatively... Applicants listed on the rental/lease agreement, income was negatively impacted due to COVID-19. With that, it, there doesn't have to be a set amount. It is as long as you have been negatively impacted. So if your hours were cut by five hours a week, you are still eligible to apply. Inability to pay rent due to COVID-19. Required documentation, photo ID, demonstration of financial hardship. That can be pay stubs, unemployment information, a letter from your place of employment. Again, pre-COVID, so pre, before March 17th, and then after March 17th, showing that there was a loss of reduction, loss or reduction in hours or income. Copy of your current lease, verification from the landlord stating the amounts and months that rent is owed, notice to vacate or eviction if that is, if one has been received. Completed W-9 from the landlord, again, that's to issue payment, and a statement from the landlord stating they will not evict for non-payment for the months of assistance received through this program. Okay, so these are the program updates from Monday, when we went live on the 27th, until last night. So we have received over 500 calls from the help desk. I personally have received probably 150 calls that I've answered from landlords. We had a little bit of a glitch last week with our landlord portion of the application, but we were able to get that fixed. We have had 1,457 applications that were received. Of those, 1,257 were valid applications. We had some duplicate applications, and we also had some that were not complete. So that's the 12, or 1,257. Fifty-eight percent of the landlords have completed their portion of the application. We are waiting to hear back from 42% of the landlords. That comes to 526. We've processed 126 applications, and we are actively have our hands on 363 applications that we're processing. The monthly requests, as far as rent goes, is $33 to $2,600. Again, that's just the monthly request that I polled. The $2,600 is accurate. I double-checked that. The next highest was about $1,700. And then the average monthly request is $851.38. The month's assistance was requested. This is what we're, as far as the cases we're currently processing. Seventeen percent of the applicants are looking for assistance with April forward. Eleven percent May forward, 17% June forward, 31% July forward, and 23% August forward. That said, we've had quite a few applicants that have selected April through August, and they actually only needed one or two months of assistance. I think they were just checking everything to be safe. As far as our denials goes, we have had 77 applications that have been denied thus far. Four of them were for gross income was over the 100% AMI for their household size. Ten, ten of them were insufficient documentation. Fifty-seven was insufficient documentation. Therefore, we were unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. Six, we were just simply unable to verify hardship due to COVID-19. That said, applicants can absolutely reapply for assistance if they were denied. I would just really recommend that they look at their denial reason and upload that supporting documentation that shows that they were financially impacted. If they forgot to upload their ID or anything else that we have asked, to go ahead and update that. Like I stated yesterday, we are going above and beyond to contact all of the applicants if there is some missing information. So we're not just denying a case that we are able to go ahead and move forward on processing it. And so with these cases, they either didn't supply anything, or when we reached out, they still were unable to provide us with the information we needed. We have approved 49 applications. Today, that came to the board was $27,112.90. That was for 17 households. As of yesterday, last, yesterday evening, we had approved $76,021.20 in rental assistance for 42 households. There were, as of this, seven households awaiting payment. This morning, just sitting here, I've approved five additional households for rental payment. The approval amounts have ranged from $569 to $3,964.31. That individual requested April through August and also had some late fees. The average assistance being approved is $1,810.3. Again, this is our website. If anybody would like to apply or get more information, And our help desk line is 402-444-7230, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30.
Thank you for that, Melissa. Questions or comments? Commissioner Morgan?
I want to thank you very much for your thorough, good work you and your staff are doing on this. I also think an effort should be made to the landlords sometimes, because you're probably paying the late fees. And I think you ought to make the request that, hey, you waive the late fees during this kind of COVID-19 virus. That just seems a little selfish to me.
We've had a lot of landlords that have waived late fees because the tenants have reported a late fee, and we've confirmed, we've checked with a landlord because they said zero, and the landlord stated that they have waived them. So we haven't seen a ton of late fees, but we definitely are seeing them and kind of getting the message, business is business.
And I think maybe let some of them know that, and I think I could speak for most, all of the board, that we would really certainly recommend that they waive those late fees so that we can have that money going out to help with rent to others, possibly. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. Have we had anybody reach the max? And we got 4,000 or four-month max. And I think you indicated nobody's actually at 4,000, but it sounded like somebody might be at four months.
The one individual that was at the $3,900 has maxed out on months. And if you would look at the amount, they would only be eligible for a little under $100 if we look at that $4,000 amount.
Okay, so the one individual, if I got this correct, they maxed out on the time, the four months, but not the dollar amount?
Yes.
And so what was their four-month total that they?
It was the 3,900, $3,964.31.
So it was very close on, on the max on the money part, too.
Yes.
This brings up the question, because this is four months into, you know, the program, that we are probably going to have to discuss this perhaps in our next meeting to extend it, because that person is no longer eligible to receive rent assistance for the balance of the year. Is that right?
Correct.
And yet that person probably isn't going back to work. I don't know, but it would seem to me that with unemployment ending last week, that this is going to get worse before it gets better. So I, I'm just saying, there's a very high probability that we're going to have to come back soon to extend the back end of this four-month period. And, you know, I appreciate these weekly updates because the $4,000 figure would impact this person as well. Even if we gave them another month, they're only going to be eligible for a few hundred dollars, or less than $100 if they have that $4,000 max, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you for this, and this is great progress. So we're glad we're up and running, and you're doing a good job on this. Thanks, thanks very much. It's really important that we're finally getting some CARES money to actual people in our community. And it couldn't come at a better time in light of the Congress doing absolutely nothing to help people running out of unemployment insurance last week. Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments or questions for Clerk Ash?
Thank you, Dan. That was Kenny Clerk. Just wanted to say, as, as she stated, Melissa, last week, we did some of the payments you guys approved today for claims amendments that included roughly $27,000 of this rental assistance. And obviously, there'll be more coming probably every week. But that's, that was the initial batch that we got everything back on time and sent it out as soon as we could.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, nice to see these going through the process and getting to the people. Very good. Thank you, Melissa. Keep up the good work, you and your staff. Next on the agenda, we have the utilities assistance update, and our old friend, Rick Kubat.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good morning, Rick.
Rick Kubat here on behalf of the Metropolitan Utilities District. And I, I believe online, we've got some folks with OPPD as well. I believe you, on your consent agenda, approved the agreement under Item F with Dollar Energy. Really here just to answer any questions if, if you have any.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Excuse me, Rick, you and I were visiting just a little bit before the meeting, and you mentioned that there's a situation under which MUD gets billed for some applications. Would you please just bring that up so that everybody who's involved knows about that? I was surprised. Is there some, when you get, is it that, when a paper application is made, you have to pay?
That's, that's correct. As we discussed earlier, the utilities are paying all administrative costs. So every dollar that Douglas County allocates for utility assistance is going to be used for utility assistance. That being said, OPPD and MUD have an agreement with Dollar Energy, if, which is essentially a certain percentage of the overall contract. And if folks have the ability, and should, if they need to, go to the listing of local nonprofits that we provided to you. But if they go through the local nonprofit, there's an additional $12 administrative fees that, again, the utilities are going to pick up. So not anything that I would think the county would be concerned about as far as your allocation of dollars. But to the degree that we can have folks go directly to the website, it's, it's, it's less money that the utilities need to pay for administrative costs.
And I didn't, I hope I'm not bringing this up, and you didn't want me to talk about it. But I just thought that somebody, it's, you're doing so much already. I don't like to see you paying any additional fees. So maybe if the places that are taking the paper applications could even maybe enter them themselves on an internet, because a lot of, the people who use in paper are, don't have access to the internet, so. But I just, if there's some way to, we could help you do away with that fee, I'd like to try to, try to do it. So I appreciate your cooperation, your stepping up. It's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Further, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank friends and partners at MUD and OPPD and Dollar Energy for their great work on getting this up and running ASAP. It's going to be a real benefit to citizens in our community who are impacted by COVID and out of work and unable to pay their bills, particularly those who are suffering now that the unemployment has run out, and this is going to get worse going forward. So thank you. This is a great program. And again, like the rent assistance, really the first aid that we've been able to get from the CARES Act directly to people. I think that this wouldn't have happened without the active participation of OPPD and MUD. And we appreciate the waiver of late fees. Is that correct? And this is kind of going to bring a stop to disconnection notices as well. Is that right?
Partially, I would say. It's, it's certainly going to delay shut-offs in the sense that, that Douglas County is providing funds available to assist folks pay their utility bills. And so I would articulate it that way. To the degree that folks are going to be able to get up to $750 of utility assistance for their electrical bill and 750 for their MUD bill, it's, it's certainly going to delay a large group of people from getting shut off sooner. And our goal at the utilities are to do whatever we can to avoid shutting people, shutting people's essential services off during these times.
Well, thank you for that. Like you heard from General Assistance, it would be very helpful if, and perhaps Dollar Energy would be the appropriate entity to do this. If we could have kind of a weekly update. You saw the metrics that our director brought to us in terms of number of people served, number of dollars expended. Because going forward, we anticipate this need isn't going to end anytime soon, and we probably are going to want to match the resources available to the need that is expressed out there. So I'm, I'm sure that there's somebody on this call that could speak to that, but it would be great if we could have a regular weekly update like we're getting from General Assistance on this direct aid to individuals.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'm not certain, I know Dollar Energy was on the phone call. I do know that they have a pretty robust reporting system with quite a bit of information. And the utilities and Dollar Energy will work with the County Board of Commissioners to get you what information, whatever information you desire in as timely of a fashion as possible.
That's great. And again, congratulations to the Heads Up Management and Board at both MUD and OPPD for stepping up and helping us during this troubling time. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments during this update? If not, I thank MUD and OPPD for coming and helping us with this effort.
Thank you. The last thing I just want to say is we're very appreciative and grateful to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for this effort, and additionally for the work of the County, Douglas County Attorney's Office to expedite this whole process. So thank you.
Thank you, Rick. It's nice to get to this point. Okay, that's all we have on the agenda for CARES Act update this morning. We will move down anything under legislation that we want to talk about.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Boyle?
Oh, all right, just very quickly. We need to, I think, get a message to, well, all of us need to talk about this. I think that the procedures for Board of Equalization are really cumbersome. I mean, next week, I think we're going to be getting, I know we've gotten the stuff from, the information from Dan, but it doesn't have the, we need more information to try to make decisions. And we seem to get it like a fire hose, you know? And on Friday, I guess, I guess it's a little bit changed. But I plan to have several, several landlord issues that I plan to bring up that are, some of them represented by Sean, but others that are not. And, and so what I plan to do is to bring them up one at a time and ask for the Board to consider, and I'll get the information to you as soon as I can, to consider what the landlords are asking for, what kind of relief, and also because a lot of their tenants have not been paying rent. And so I'll be bringing those up, and then we'll be, unfortunately, I guess we have to vote on them one at a time, but there's probably going to be about 25 at least, maybe 30, but I'll do it as briefly as possible, and I'll give you the information in advance so you can see it. And today, I guess I got some, I got some more, too, that are highlighted. I don't know, I guess Catherine must have put these out. So I think there's going to be some, you know, some appeals. That's the only way we can do it, though. But boy, there's got to be a better, better way to do this so we don't get it all one, at one time.
Well, and I personally am more comfortable letting our process work than us picking out some cases that get another level of scrutiny. I believe there may be some situations where people didn't even get their appointment with, if they requested an in-person appointment with a referee. I believe there were some citizens that never got it because we just ran out of referees and referees' time, and we weren't able to accommodate it. What we're doing here, though, is taking people that did get an appointment with a referee, however they got it, and giving them a second round of appeals. And that, there's a process issue there that makes me a little more comfortable.
That is part of the process, though, is making that appeal to the Board of Equalization. And I know that they were fortunate enough to have a hearing, I guess. You call up, you know, going through 42 properties in three hours with a referee over the telephone, and they didn't have all the information, and they weren't prepared. But that doesn't mean they should get screwed just because other people are getting screwed. So, and that, then there's another list. I just got this, I guess it's from Catherine. And so, but that's the only way to go, and that's the way it has to be handled. People are entitled to protest these before the Board of Equalization during that period of time. And if people don't step up and do it, that's, that's just the way life is sometimes. And I'm not trying to favor anybody. I'm trying to help with, these people don't live in my district. But I'm trying to help them with their appeal to have a reasonable living. They're already in, underwater in a lot of situations, so. But that's the process. That's what I brought up this up for in the first place, is this property, this whole process is incredibly flawed and is unmanageable and is a smokescreen. We're not delivering any relief to the taxpayers by handling things this way. And the legislature needs to, we need to convince them that this is a very, very poor system. That when you get 7,000 or 5,000 claims on Friday afternoon, and you have to vote on them by Tuesday, it's unreasonable. So that's all I was really trying to say, and I'm not playing favorites on anybody. I really resent that, Claire. I'm not shitting people.
I, I know you're not.
Oh, excuse me, but I have taxpayers who come to me and ask for help. And so that's what I'm trying to do. Oh, excuse me, but I have taxpayers who come to me and ask for help. And so that's what I'm trying to deliver. People that are, have invested their life savings in shopping centers or a couple little places, and they're, they didn't have their tenants pay rent. So what are they supposed to do? Lose it by foreclosure? Can't they have a hearing before the County Board? That's all I'm trying to facilitate. No favors. I don't even know who these people are.
Thank you.
I know, I recognize the names.
And I know you better than that, Mike.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
We've been friends for a long time. I do know you better than that.
Thanks.
There is an appearance issue that I'm concerned with, that not everybody's being treated the same. We'll keep the conversation going. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, sorry, just a comment on everyone who requests an appointment. We were able to set an appointment up. Now, there may be situations that I'm not aware of where someone didn't get it, either a miscommunication or something, but we've, when that's occurred, we've always worked with them to get them rescheduled. But everybody who requested appointment was scheduled for an appointment.
Very good.
Obviously, we were obviously struggling with that, but we did, we did get it.
I was aware of the struggle. Do you think even the in-person requests were all accommodated?
Well, there may have been folks who originally wanted in-person, and then when we told them of the lack of availability at the moment, they may have, they may have said, okay, I'll just do a phone appointment.
I sure hope you're right. I, that would be, that would be great. I know we were having a lot of issues trying to get everything processed in a timely fashion here. So that would be great.
In all candor, one of the persons I'm trying to help here said that they finally got a hearing to present 45 properties in two and a half hours. And at times, the referee didn't even have the information, and they had to email them to him. So they get a feeling that they're being treated pretty shabbily, to be honest. And it's not the fault of the office. I'm just saying you got, but that's the impression of the taxpayers, the people who are losing their property.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under legislation, Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, a big amendment that was filed by Senator Hunt was filed to eliminate the requirement for HHS approval for DHA, for the Direct Health Measures. So we'll closely monitor that. But for those who have been monitoring the legislature, lots of conversation, but no budget yet. Those were both, discussions were filibustered. Property tax revenue, or property tax incentives, the UNMC dollars requested are really on the table right now. So been watching a lot of that closely. The, that's about it for legislation, but we'll watch that amendment closely because that's an interesting one for us, obviously.
I didn't realize that was going on.
Other than the legislation, I just wanted also to give you a short update. Nationwide had been giving some webinars for women retirement. And they were very well attended and very well appreciated, appreciated. And so over the next several months, we're going to continue to provide those. And they're, they're basically calling them these Financial Wellness Wednesdays. And they're going to be webinars. It doesn't take the place of in-person education. But while we're going through the COVID, it's important that we continue to provide those educational pieces to our employees. And so every Wednesday, starting August 5th through August, or through September 9th, they're going to do a, again, a financial wellness series for our employees via webinar. And so one will be, let's get real separating fact from fiction, and it's how to estimate your own retirement needs. Again, they're going to do the Women in Retirement, Retirement 101, Nearing Retirement, Shares 10 Things to Think About When You're Planning for Living in Retirement, Your Healthy Retirement, talks about Medicare and healthcare costs, and then Social Security, the Choice of a Lifetime. And it prepares you for the social security decisions and education that you'll need to consider. So I just want, we've sent this out countywide, so everybody knows about them. But I wanted to let the board know that our HR committee has worked very hard to continue to, again, educate and provide tools and resources to our employees, especially during the COVID time via webinars.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Unless there's anything else under legislation, I believe we are down to the executive session portion of the agenda. We do have need for an executive session for purposes of negotiations and litigation, I believe are the two.
I think next Tuesday, I understand we're not going to meet, but I believe on Tuesday, I have, I have no board meeting on the 18th?
18th, that's two weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two weeks out.
That's where, that's where I am. The, I would like to say, I think on the 18th is actually the 100th anniversary of women getting, taking, not getting, the right to vote, because they, nobody gave it to them. They took it. But anyway, so maybe we should have a, what's that?
Having a presentation.
Oh, good. I was hoping you'd take care of it. That was my, that was my next question. Okay, good deal.
We are. It's getting prepared.
All right. Good deal. Thanks.
I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for, for purposes of negotiations and litigation.
That's great.
Commissioner, oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're up on nine. Exec session is going to be up on the ninth floor.
See, that's, why can't we just go back there?
Because we had a complaint about ventilation.
He's not going to be there.
Oh.
It's going to be by Zoom.
Okay. Well, we probably can't do Zoom. We can't do Zoom in here.
Oh, that's, all right, whatever. It's just silly.
All right, all right. So exec session will be in 903.
What purposes?
Negotiations and litigation.
Okay, good, thanks.
And you're supposed to repeat that like three times, so I never mind you asking.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, yeah, Dan will just have to hang out or something.
Commissioners, Kavanaugh and Borgeson. Are you? Sorry, PJ, hold on a second. Motion passes, six zeros, a motion by Boyle, second by Morgan. And the commissioners will be doing an executive session in room 903.